Okay, thank you all for being here. Today is Tuesday, June 13th, and we are holding the East Line Planning Commission's regular meeting. We do have a couple of members absent tonight, so I'm going to ask Timothy Leducer and Olivia Fairchild, the alternates, to come up and be seated for this meeting. Brian, thank you also for being here. I understand you did the last one, so we're going in our rotation. Thank you. Olivia, here you go. Thank you. Okay, and while you're getting settled, I'm just gonna do a quick roll call. Olivia? We'll start with you, Olivia Fairchild.
Yeah.
Richard Gordon.
Here.
Timothy Leducer.
Here.
Michelle Williams, here. Thomas Fitting.
Here.
And Jason Deebel.
Here.
Fantastic. If everyone could please stand up and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight from any members who are seated? No? Okay. Now, we're gonna have a call for public delegations. So, I'm gonna read what's written here for people who may be new to this meeting, but "Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters. Items, referrals, or applications that are subject to a decision by the commission are subject to a public hearing or, in litigation, may not be discussed. During delegations, the members of the commission will not directly answer any questions or make comment." So, is anyone here who would like to speak on items not listed below? Come on up, and if you could just introduce yourself and offer your address for the record as well.
My name is Nancy Colau, 80 Grassy Hill Road in East Line. Because of all the brouhaha over subdivisions, made me curious. I went through regulations, and I couldn't find any regulations about easements for fire access. Now, I don't know, some of you probably are too young to remember, when the Darrell's Ridge subdivision went through, there was a big deal, had to be a fire access road from Upper Patagonia. Well, I went up Darrell's Ridge Road and the side roads and couldn't find the access. So, I got curious, and I ran around to Upper Patagonia, Upper Kensington, and lo and behold, I found the access. I'm really curious, there's, how long is an access road for fire prevention? I couldn't find that in the rules. There's no designated width, as in can trucks turn around, or when trucks get to the end, which, by the way, there is no egress onto Kensington, onto Darrell's Ridge. It's only from the west end of the road. So, I found this fire access road totally impassable to anything but Super Duty Ford that's high up off the ground, so it doesn't bottom out. I can't see a fire engine getting there, and if it got there, it'd have to back all the way back, somewhere between a half a mile and a mile. The traffic, heavily rutted traffic, is mostly from ATVs. The neighbors stopped me and asked why I was taking pictures and said that there's gangs of kids, 20 and 30 at a time, that ride their bikes and ATVs and rip zip around. There is a chain across that says Darrell's Pond, but there's, it's locked, but there's, who's got the key? I don't know. So, I just, I know Inland Wetland is looking to upgrade their regs, and perhaps that's something that is in your purview also.
Okay, thank you. Do you mind leaving those photos with us? We can-
Not at all.
-submit them in to the record? Thank you. I'll just pass these around for now, and then-
Pretty self-explanatory.
And then Gary will make sure you get these.
So, I do wonder, who is responsible for access on easements? Is it the guy at the end whose driveway on Darrell's Pond is responsible in the case of a fire? Is it the Goodbridge Trail, which the fire access road has to cross over to get to Darrell's Ridge? Is it Torrance, who owns a lot of land that the access road is on? Is it the town of East Line? I think that carries notice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else for public delegations this evening? Okay, so we're gonna move into reports. Gary, did we have any communications this month?
You have no commi- excuse me, no communications this month. However, I do have some things that I would discuss with the commission. We'll just table that until, maybe we can take that later on in the meeting.
Fantastic. Great. Zoning representative. I'm on the agenda here as the zoning representative, but I was not able to make it, and I think Brian and I had switched. Brian, were you able to make the meeting? Okay, we do have a zoning alternate here, if no one else on the planning commission was able to make the zoning meeting. Are we able to get our update from the zoning member present on just what took place?
They're from the zoning commission, I would-
Not do it?
Probably refrain, just for procedural purposes, yeah. Just refrain.
Refrain.
It's fine.
We will all read the minutes and look at YouTube. Okay, our ex officio is here and can give us an update. Mr. Weber, anything we should know about?
He has no updates this month.
Great! Flying through. Planning director, we've just discussed moving that to the end. Yeah? And we can, I do not have any updates for E or F either. So, with that taken care of, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 9th?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason.
Second.
Thank you, Rich.
I could, I'm sorry, just for the record, I was not able to make the zoning meeting when I was scheduled.
Okay.
So, I don't, I did not make a report, so just, someone emailed a report.
Oh!
So, I just wanted to mention for the record that I did not update the planning commission on that.
Thank you. So, let's-
Was it a written report? Somebody-
I don't know if it was, but I did not email anybody.
Thank you. Someone might have done it for me.
Yeah, let's strike that section from there, then, under B. Yes. Okay.
Yeah, I think somebody read your report that you emailed.
Hmm. That was a month ago, I'm not recalling.
Yeah, I emailed saying I couldn't make it and to see if someone would switch with me, and I didn't hear anything back, so I'm not sure.
I think we got the report from someone who had been at the meeting, there might have been another member at the meeting. I think there were two members from planning happened to go to the meeting.
Yeah.
Then that's how we got it. I'd have to go back and look at the minutes.
I can't recall it either. Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we read a report from the April 20th, because we definitely did go through it. So, if we could just strike Tim's name from that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have amended the minutes. Jason and Rich, do you wanna alter your motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
Fantastic.
I'd second the minutes as amended.
Fantastic. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you.
I wasn't up today.
And Tom, well, got that. So, motion carries.
One abstention.
Two abstentions.
Two.
Olivia and Tom.
Yeah, I wasn't here.
Okay. We do not have any public hearings tonight, which brings us to our subdivisions and three subdivisions, and I see Attorney Garrity, who I'm gonna call by his correct name for the remainder of the night, is ready to present to us on Kristen T. Clark, P.E., and Shelley Harney, applicants for Portside Holdings LLC, owner, application for a five-lot subdivision, AKA the Hantic Highlands, at properly, property located on the corner of Upper Walnut Hill Road and Holmes Road, East Line Assessors Map number 55.0, lot number 3.1, zoned RU80. And this was submitted to us on May 1st, received May 9th. As you remember, at the last meeting, we accepted it, and we have until July 13th to decide on this subdivision. So, with that, thank you.
For, just going on, just noting July 13th, our next regular scheduled meeting is July 11th.
Yep.
I would also note that the application is before the Inland Wetland Agency, so this commission cannot act until you receive that report and/or permit from that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Paul Garrity from Garrity Manano for the applicant, which is Portside Holdings and English Harbor Asset Management as tenants in common. This application is a proposal to create four additional lots on an area off of Upper Walnut that was reserved by the Duval Partners as part of their transformation of the balance of that land into open space that was then transferred to the East Line Land Trust. The lots will range in si- and with me tonight is Tim May from May Engineering and Jim Bernardo from Bernardo Surveying, so if there are any technical questions on some of that, the aspects of this application, both gentlemen are here to address those. The parcel itself is 12.4 acres. It's located on the corner of Holmes Road and Upper Walnut. The lots are gonna range in size from two to four acres. Each lot will have a minimum of 200 feet of frontage. The remainder of the property, which I had just alluded to, of just under 265 acres, has been preserved in perpetuity by a conservation easement held by the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and the title is held by the East Line Land Trust, subject to that conservation easement. All those documents have been recorded in both the town of Monville and the town of East Line. If I may, I have the design report that my client prepared as part of this, which I'll hand up to the members, and also my client's response to Mr. Geischel's comments on the subdivision application.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can take that one.
Yes, it is. And I'd like to just walk through it briefly in order to give you just a summary of the issues that were identified by my client, and also the response to Mr. Geischel's comments on the design itself. The biological report is identified in the design report and subsequent response to Mr. Geischel's plan comments dated May 30th, 2023, and the NDDP determination identified a turtle, a snake, and a bird of concern that may be influenced by the proposed development activities, and suggested some mitigation measures which are limited, which will limit the schedules for clearing activities, which Ms. Clark has proactively asked that you incorporate into any approval for this as part of the subdivision plan. There are no endangered species identified on the NDDP report, and the restrictions proposed by the applicant relate only to lots four and five. The recommendations can be found in the design report as Exhibit 1. With regard to the open space, and I'm actually going in the order of the design plan, I'll get to that towards the end of my presentation. The design report identifies this application as a conservation design development due to the number of new lots being created, that being four. And as I indicated, the size of the property is 12.4 acres, so it's in excess of the 10 that's set forth in the subdivision regulations. This was also addressed by Ms. Clark in her response to Mr. Geischel's plans and her item As identified by Ms. Clark in both her design report and the response to Mr. Geischel's plan comments, the subdivision plan before you conforms to both conventional subdivision regulations and the conservation design development requirements. In fact, in either case, we could have actually increased the yield of these, of this parcel by proposing two lots for the four-acre parcel on Upper Walnut, identified as Lot Five, but in an effort to minimize the impact on that, we have chosen, chosen to keep that lot at just over four acres. As Ms. Clark identified and provided in her response to Mr. Geischel's plan comments, we've received conditional approval for each of the proposed lots from Ledge Light Health District with regard to septic and on-site water. Copy of the Ledge Light conditional approval letter is attached to Ms. Clark's response to Mr. Geischel's comments as Exhibit 1. With regard to the stormwater management plan, we received comments from Mr. Shear, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Madu to address this as he spoke with him as recently as yesterday with regard to that. So, Tim, if you want to address Bill's comments.
Good evening. My name's Tim May from May Engineering. Couple of the comments I went over with your Public Works Director, Mr. Shear, who is reviewing this for Alex Close, who's out on military duties. I went through this, I received these last week, I think Thursday or Friday, and I got in contact with Mr. Shear yesterday. So, we have a plan moving forward. They need some, I'm gonna change up the report just a little bit to give them some more fidelity. It needs a little more granularity for a proper review, so that's essentially what these comments suggest, and I have talked to him, so I'm working on that.
Can you direct us to where I'm, we're bouncing around just a bit, and I trust that everything's here, but can you point us to what you're referring to in this packet, which exhibit?
Oh, do you wanna give them a copy of this?
Sure. Yep. This is a copy of Mr. Shear's memo. I'd be happy to bring that up, but I don't have it posted to the website, but I do have it in file.
Yeah.
Didn't get to it.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Did you wanna review these, or do you wanna go-
Well, I just wanna ask one more question to Mr. Geischel. In our record, what exhibit would this one be?
It's gonna be Exhibit G.
Exhibit G. Okay. Thank you.
I actually have several exhibits that were added since the last meeting, G through J, which includes the document that I believe Mr. Garrity already handed out to you.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. If you could just give us a minute to browse, that would be fantastic. Thank you for allowing us that time.
So, did you wanna discuss some of these comments, or did you want to? They're, they're in play right now, is what I'm saying, is I'm actually gonna resolve them. Number one, I'm gonna give a report that'll help, show that clearly, and I also provided a drainage map with the cemental, so it either, maybe he didn't see it, or he didn't review it, but it is included. And I do, in the drainage report, it does discuss the 2, 5, 10, 25, 50, 100-year storms, and I need to look those over a little bit more, and, and one of the things they wanted to know, these, this, that shows the cue, the peak runoff, the time that the, at a storm event, that you would have a maximum flow. And in addition, one of these comments, he wants to see the total volumetric flow, which is another requirement in East Line, so that'll be provided as well. That's item three. The sizing calculations, I use the DOT reference, and they are sized for 150 cubic feet of basically like storage. They're, they're located here on lots one and lot five, and what they do is they'll slow down the water before entering into the wetland areas, and they're basically a stone, stone, stone line with sand core that allows water to pass through and just slow the water velocity down to remove any sediment, and the maintenance, he wanted to see the maintenance of those as well, so that was another detail that I can supply. I just wanna point out there's an unregulated flow off the town road, I believe it was fairly recently put in, that has no outlet protection at all. So, that's something that's of concern, that the town of East Line has a leak-off that's draining directly into a wetlands that really should be evaluated. We can't, I, you know, this, it's not gonna address that, but we are putting in devices that would clearly clean up the water and the velocities from the site. So, I did not bring pictures with me, but I can show them that there's a, you know, that's a significant issue, I think, for the owner of this property and for, you know, the wetlands' impact, so. We did include on the plan, there is, the plan that shows the limits of clearing, and the grading limits is, has been supplied as well. I don't know if Mr. Shear didn't see that, or if he didn't see that in the report, but it is with the cemental as we speak, so these will be cleared up in the next few days. So, it's speaking.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the other one. So, the first one is lot four, and the second one is lot one.
Oh, great.
And we just have two photographs. This is lot four, so this is coming directly off of Holmes Road, and this is lot one. And it's showing that there's no, there's no outlet protection for scour or sediment or any, you know, pollution reduction in the wetlands. And lot one. Lot four is here, and lot one is here, and that's located, for lot one, that is located right here on this map.
Okay.
So, it's, it's actually in the wetlands.
Okay. Can we get these into the record? I'm gonna pass it down, and probably need an exhibit number for Sue.
And it being Exhibit K. Mr. Geischel, I noticed on the website, there's two Exhibits Cs and no Exhibit D. I don't know if that's gonna complicate matters further.
Oh, thank you. I will have to correct that.
Is there something we should have that's not here?
It's a drainage report. Well, drainage reports. Those are both drainage reports. The site development plan, both plants, should also be up here as well. As part of the Exhibit A, I didn't see them in there when I pulled Exhibit A up, which actually is in the Wetland Agency application and not the planning commission application, so I think there must have been some confusion as to which application went where, how it got posted on the website. So, my apologies to the public. You will correct that immediately tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jason, as well.
All right. There are no public improvements required to enact this subdivision, as all the lots have frontage on town roads. The applicants have prepared and provided the required site context plan as required by the subdivision regulations, and the applicants have prepared and provided a natural and cultural resources site analysis plan in response to Mr. Geischel's comments. I have some 11 by 17 of those, so that you can see the demography and the soil as well. And I also have a full-size one though, because those are much easier to read than these. This is Exhibit I. Goes along with the memorandum from Kristen Clark in response to my memo.
This is I, along with Kristen Clark. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
It's a larger scale, it's still easier to read. This has the field work, the elevation time.
There's no, with regard to the archaeological report, the fieldwork has been completed by our archaeologist, Sarah Holmes, and she's currently preparing her report, which will conform to Phase 1B requirements, and based on our conversations with her, we believe that there is nothing on the property that would result in any issues there, and we anticipate a clean report when it's completed. There are no construction activities or construction sequence reports required. There are no easements required by the subdivision of this property. There's no evidence of farming activity on the 12-acre site, and therefore, no further requirements with regard to determining whether pesticides are used on the property. The application, or the applicants provided the required energy efficiency conservation statement in the design report with regard to the inland wetlands. We were before wetlands last week. Wetlands decided to hold a public hearing on the application. I would note from the June 6th agenda, it lists new business, application of Kristen Clark and Shelley Harney for Portside Holdings. On that, it says the date of receipt is May 2nd, 2023, and then it indicates 65 days to render a decision would be July 13th, 2023. That is actually incorrect. 65 days would take us to just before, would be, take us to July 6th, 2023, and they're not scheduling a public hearing until after the 65-day period runs. So, that does present an issue for this commission, because if the Wetlands Agency doesn't act within the 65 days, this commission then may proceed on its own to render a determination without the input of inland wetlands. I don't know whether Wetlands is gonna move to conduct a special hearing. I'll probably have a conversation with Gary about that this week, but based on our calculations, if they do hold it as planned on the 13th, they would miss the deadline for conducting a public hearing.
Before we move off of that topic, are there calculations similar to ours as we track submitted and received as two different triggers?
Date of receipt?
Yes.
It's the same as ours. So, basically, they submitted on May 1st, the, in the Wetland Agency, May 2nd.
Received.
Technically, I would say the date of receipt is the May 2nd date.
Right.
However, and I, unfortunately, I couldn't find in the statutes anything to contradict this, but in the new 2023, the eighth edition of What's Legally Required, ZISCa indicates that the day, you know, so the date of receipt for the purposes of commencing a hearing or rendering a decision is the earlier of, one, the day of the next regularly scheduled meeting of the agency immediately following the day the application was submitted, provided the meeting is no earlier than three business days after submission, or, two, 35 days after the application was submitted. The date of receipt for giving any required notices to adjoining municipalities under Section CGS, Section 8-7DF, or Water Companies and the Commission of Public Health, under CGS, Section 8-3I, or CGS, Section 22A-42F, is the actual date of receipt.
So, that-
I don't know where he got the three-day thing. I, what was interesting is I went back to 2004 edition of What's Legally Required, and he notes that in Public Act 03, I think it was 170- And he notes that in Public Act 03, I think it was 177, it omitted that three-day. We had the three-day rule. And so in that, I'm not sure, so I'm not clear what the date of receipt would be. So conservatively, I'm using May 2nd. So my next step would be to reach out to the applicant, say could you grant us a one-day or two-day, I don't know how long it was. Then a week extension to conduct the public hearing. And I'm happy to have a conversation with Mr. Geishel about that issue.
Right.
Us moving forward procedurally. Right. And so, and with respect to that, there aren't any activities proposed in the wetlands themselves. There are, or the water courses with the exception of a small area on lot five. Lot five, there is an existing driveway on the property that goes through a portion of the upland review area. But again, we're not proposing any activity within the wetlands themselves. The report by Mr. Thoreau that's in the record indicates that the activity on lot one and on lot five won't have any negative impact on the wetlands themselves. The, and actually, as I said, the driveway on lot five is an existing driveway. And we are going to continue in terms of the development of that lot to use that existing driveway rather than cut a new driveway in there. And that, as Mr. May alluded to earlier, that is a lot that also has the pipe that drains Upper Walnut Hill Road on to lot five.
Got it.
While, and while the Wetlands Agency did decide to conduct a public hearing on that, I would just state for the record that we don't think that it was necessary in light of the fact that there's no activity in the wetlands themselves. And Mr. Thoreau's report indicates that there won't be any negative impact. But obviously, the agency gets to decide if it wants to hold a public hearing and we understand that. The whole design of the project, as I indicated earlier, by excluding or reducing the number of lots we could get on there was designed to minimize any developmental impacts on the site and particularly the wetlands on there. There were some issues raised with regard to Cranberry Brook. Cranberry Brook is to the southeast corner of this property. It's on the Land Trust property. It, one of the issues that was raised there, and I'm raising it tonight just so the commission is aware, was that one of the members of the Wetlands Commission was concerned that runoff from lot five might impact that. But if you look on the topo map, what you'll see is that the headwaters for Cranberry Creek, Brook, are 1,500 feet to the southeast of that and 50 feet above the level of lot five. So we don't see that that development of lot five would have any impact whatsoever on the Cranberry Brook. In regard to the open space, we've identified in the design report, this was part of 277 acres in the town of East Line. And of that, just shy of 265 acres was preserved by Duval Partners in a transaction with the East Line Land Trust. So we do not believe that a call for additional open space under the circumstances is warranted on that. I asked Mr. Lewich from the East Line Land Trust to appear to answer any questions with regard to that, as to how this all came into being. But briefly, Duval Partners acquired over 300-plus acres on that and retained through the process of transferring to the Land Trust and working with DEEP, this 12-acre parcel and another parcel on Holmes Road, which is a subject of a different application in order to make this work for both Duval Partners and for the Land Trust and the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. There's also additional open space in the town of Monfield that was created as a result of this. Mr. Lewich was not able to be here tonight, but Mr. Torrance, who was the liaison for the Land Trust, and basically it was instrumental in putting together the conservation, he's moved DEEP to see if there's any questions with regard to how that all came into being. And with that, if there's any questions with Mr. Bernardo or any other questions with Mr. May, at this time, I would cede the floor to them or the, and the commission if they have it.
Fantastic. I'll open it up for questions in just one second here. But I, knowing that we have until our next meeting and then a couple of days after to make the decision, I'd like to suggest that we kind of take the time we need to digest all the information that was provided to us today. That said, as an initial statement, do we have any questions for those who provided testimony today? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask when the next scheduled hearing would be?
July 11.
July 11. Okay.
And we'll hear in the interim about the schedule for inland wetlands.
Yeah, I'll work between now and the next meeting, the next, in the wetland meeting, I'll work with Mr. Gary to handle dealing with that issue.
I have a feeling we'll have a lot more questions if they haven't rendered a decision by the time of our next meeting.
So in that regard, I would just ask, because obviously we have beside myself, the other two professionals here. If the commission is going to want that, that we could have them, that we're backed to answer questions, that I just get Mr. Geishel to notify me somewhat like a week or two in advance so that we can assure that they'll be present?
Certainly. I think if the stormwater matters can be resolved with Mr. May and Mr. Shear, I don't know that you necessarily need to be back, but certainly if you have questions, let me know and I will.
I think it would only be in the case that inland wetlands is not able to come to a decision. This is what's in their wheelhouse, essentially.
It's essentially the stormwater. But as we've heard, you know, they're indicating that there's no impact as they demonstrate that through, as we go through the wetland process.
Yeah.
Then assuming all their Ts are crossed, Is are dotted, and there's no issues, yeah, we'd be back here without an issue, but.
In short, yes, we can let you know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, so we are going to move into the rest of the agenda. And you know what, let's do, we do not have any zoning or municipal referrals tonight. So before we get into old business, let's hop back up to the report from our planning director, Mr. Gary Geishel.
I just want to do, let you know that besides some of the subdivision stuff in POCD and affordable housing, I do a few other things. FEMA is updating their FER maps, so I'll be sitting through an upcoming on the 20th day virtual meeting with them. I guess there's still some areas here in town that will be affected. So we'll have some further changes to our flood insurance rate maps, at least here in East Line is what I anticipate. The POCD and affordable housing, I wanted to talk briefly on that. I don't know if you recall the last referral that we received. I had to draft a memo for the commission and in doing so, what I realized is a lot of the text from the previous POCD didn't make it into the new POCD. And in terms of affordable housing, as far as guiding location, it's not in the new POCD. It's not in the Affordable Housing Plan really either. It doesn't kind of identify where we want affordable housing. Whereas the previous POCD was very, or say more explicit. So I think that's something we may want to take a look at as we move forward. I just anticipate, considering the housing shortage and the potential to see additional affordable housing applications in the future, we may want to, you know, take a look and make sure that things are consistent.
Did we address in the POCD way we prefer to have housing near public transportation if possible?
I think we might have some general overarching, but I, that was, all of that stuff was primarily in the previous POCD and not so much in the updated 2021.
Right. So the previous one had specific roads and districts, kind of, right?
Right. So much so, I mean, we went as far as adopting incentive housing zones in certain areas downtown, saying we want to, you know, direct affordable housing to our town centers because it's got the infrastructure available to support it. It's not automobile dependent. And again, if you're looking at affordable housing and people who qualify for that, right? And the automobile expense, if they don't have to have it because they can live and take public transportation, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Right.
Okay. Well, we still have the POCD subcommittee formed-ish.
Hasn't met in a while.
Yeah.
We could, we could.
I would love to see that on a future, I think that's a small, it's an important item, but I think it's focused enough that we could bring it to a full commission meeting for a discussion. And that will have to go to a public hearing as well, right?
Well, if we want to make any changes to the plan of development, yes, we'll have to follow that.
Yeah.
Notification procedure, public hearing and so forth, yes. So that's a, it's a couple of month process.
Yeah. Let's, would everyone be comfortable getting this on the agenda for next month or, okay, great.
So it'll be just discussion, kind of, we'll talk about language and editing the, okay.
Yeah.
Does someone need to make a formal motion to put that forward for the next?
I don't think so.
The chair would just put it on here. Okay. And just letting you all know, we went out with an RFP for the Samuel Smith House architectural study, long awaited. The history here, I think some of you may remember, we applied for a $10,000 grant to replace the roof. Back in, I think it might have been 1920, 2020, we got awarded, but with COVID, the price of materials and everything went up and they never increased that amount. And when DEEP, the State Historic Preservation Office came down to take a look at the house, they were concerned about the carrying beam. So we had to do an architectural study for that carrying beam in order to replace the roof. In the meantime, Samuel friends of Samuel Smith House have replaced the roof. They rebuilt the chimney. If that's all mud packed chimney, really, go take a look, it's really cool. Anyhow, the study is now getting underway. So we haven't selected a vendor that we, next week, I believe it is, the 26th is, I think it's the 26th. I'd have to go back and look at the RFP, but I'm just happy to report that that's moving forward. And then just a subdivision status update, we have a couple of subdivisions. Probably one, Farm Meadow, it's up off of Grassy Hill Road. It's kind of defunct, has one lot that was conveyed out of it. There's a binder course down, there's a cistern sitting on the shoulder. So I'm going to reach out to Mr. Landino and hopefully we can get this thing to fruition to the end and get a final course of asphalt on there. And I think that's really all that's needed, that cistern to be buried. Not a lot of work left. And then that road could be given over to the town, to the town road. And the Orchard subdivision is coming along. They have about the back half, probably about a half a mile of road left to pave. And then Pumpkin Grove, which they've started building houses on, they've got processed down and the road kind of boxed in, but no asphalt as of yet. But I do anticipate the remainder of Arbor Crossing coming online sometime before the end of this year. And then I suspect probably next year we'll get the rest of Pumpkin Grove unless they're really ambitious.
About what percentage buildout is that at this point?
It was 160 lots. So they've got, I would say maybe 25 to 30 lots left. Not many. I think there's like 15 to 19 on Pumpkin Grove. So there's I think one or two lots left on Arbor Crossing. Interestingly, the Culbissack Pear Grove, which has been developed for a number of years, there's still a lot that they're available for sale. So there's still, there's still making lots up there.
It's almost done up there.
Great. Thank you for those updates. As indicated in your earlier bullet, I do not have an update on the Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Subcommittee as we have not met. Do have a quick update under the chair report. I did want to just let this group know that last week I was appointed as a commission member to Water and Sewer Commission. And the town attorney reviewed that it is not a conflict of interest as that is not a land use commission. So there will be a brief period of time where my service will overlap with both. But I think this group mostly knows that I am not seeking reelection in the fall term anyway. My term will be up this November on this commission. So just wanted to let you know in case you heard through the grapevine on that.
Before you move on, I did forget one. West Lane, they started the subdivision, familiar, five lots over there. That work has begun. A lot of the infrastructure has already been installed. They've just buttoning it up, a few more pipes to go in the ground and some driveway to be paved. But I think that'll be completed, the infrastructure work, probably within the next month or so.
Great. Thank you. Okay. This takes us into our old business on the subdivision regulations. Thank you for printing these out.
So this is an updated iteration before you.
Just to level set us, is this pretty similar to the document we reviewed at the last meeting?
Similar with a couple of changes. I can go through them quickly. We were updating the section on section 4-13 regarding the ERT.
Do you have another copy of this? Thank you.
And I have, I have more copies downstairs printing, but just I ran out of paper in time. So section 4-14. We had a requirement for the ERT. So the commission was kind of of the opinion that they didn't want to eliminate the whole section completely, but to come up with some language to, what they would require, this agency would require to review to fulfill that environmental review. It was my opinion at the last meeting that a lot of that information is already inherently in your regulations of all the biological report and things like that, and the archeo report that's required. But just to take it a step further, this is what I think this here would do and really answer some more questions rather than just having a review from professionals from across the state tell us what's existing on a piece of property. They don't necessarily give recommendations in that ERT as to what to do with the property or just how to maybe manage it in a natural state. So that said, this basically takes the environmental impact statement that you may have heard of, which is kind of a uniform thing across the nation. And it adds it right to our regulations. It's an onerous review requirement when you think about having to do environmental impact statement. Think about what they had to do for Route 11. It's a large document. So hopefully this isn't, you know, dumbed down a little bit, for lack of a better term. But hopefully this isn't too onerous. And, but we want to identify actions which may significantly affect the environment. And we define what that means. So basically requires an environmental impact assessment. Keep going on and it's kind of lengthy. That was the first section and then I guess to. Section 4216, so we're going to be jumping backward. This was the other section, something that we've seen in terms of taxes is that land is getting conveyed to one party from a, be it a nonprofit or getting conveyed to a nonprofit and there's a portion of taxes that aren't paid current and we've got to go chase them down. So hopefully this would alleviate some of that. But more importantly, just like our building permits, you have to have your. to have your taxes come current in order to get one. So here, we kind of felt like should apply the subdivision regulations as well. I believe the zoning, I talked to Bill Mulholland, he's going to take a look at this, and maybe they'll incorporate it into the zoning regs as well, but basically, make sure that they're paid current on the property prior to application, because we're going to request documentation that they are paid current before we even look at an application. And then, the next major change is that we'll go all the way to the back, which was a bit of a checklist, and I, rather than reamend the wheel, I looked at one of our neighboring towns, our next door, across the river, and appendix H. Which is a complete checklist of required materials, and.
I don't know if we have that one.
It should be, it should be in the last.
Oh, I end at 116.
Okay, because yours, the rest of yours is down, I'm sorry, you got that copy.
Fantastic. I will look forward to reading it later. In the meantime, Tim and I will share.
So, we do require this preliminary review, here's the preliminary checklist, so basic information, we're kind of defining what basic information is, and that's all this information below. We get into a final plan checklist, so the final plan before they submit it to us, very, already in our regulations and other sections about the size of the sheets, what's new here is electronic submittal, something we're going to be requiring as the land use department, we're moving forward with obtaining some permit software that's going to cover planning, zoning, wetlands, ZVA, and the building department as a whole, so all applications will be electronically submitted.
So the aim of this is just to kind of create a checklist that people can go through and make sure they have submitted a complete application?
Right, and mainly for, for me to go through and say, okay, if it's missing any of this, it's incomplete. That's, you know, they can go through it too, obviously, and the benefit is that they can say, hey, we got everything here, it's a complete application. I can do the same, and that way, we're not wasting time.
Did you say this is from a neighboring town?
Yes, or Waterford.
And so, do they have the exact same requirements as we do?
As far as, they don't, they have different subdivision regulations.
But the checklist is the same.
But in terms of the checklist, it's basically asking all the same information that we already asked for, it, spelling it out like very clearly.
Yeah, so right now, this is kind of all distributed within the regulations.
It's all the information that we.
It's in my place.
Yeah, this would be great.
It's a very gen, I don't want to say it's general, but I think almost any town could adopt this checklist, and most likely, their regulations are going to require everything that's here already. But this is just kind of, as you know, reading through our regulations, we get kind of descriptive about the context in which we want the subdivision, so that kind of is removed from here, we remove all that context, and we just say, this is what I can bulletize all of this, this is, so the site con, for instance, site context plan, one inch equals 500 feet, this is all the information that we want on it. We have some other things here, providing existing conditions plan, location of primary constraints, secondary constraints, you know, steep slopes, things like that, and this just goes on to the end. It keeps going. The final subdivision plan, final plan checklist for cluster development. Again, drafting standards, it's kind of repetitive, so maybe we want to take some of that out, that repetitiveness, you know? Again, the final plan, you have a site context plan, so it's kind of in keeping, if you gave a preliminary approval, which you can do in our regulations, versus the final approval. So it's kind of, it's, and that's the three major changes that I've brought forward. I'm going to have Ally take a look at these as well, and if she can recollect any other changes that she had come up with in her previous work on this, I've asked her if she would incorporate that in here. I think most of the work she did there was kind of the checklist stuff is what we were going for. Next step is, I'm going to take a close look at our fee schedule. I think Ally has, she kind of indicated that it is competitive. I know Sam looked at the inland wetland agency fee schedule, and he did indicate that that was competitive with the region, so we're, we'll just verify, you know, where our fee schedule stands relative to the rest of the cog and go from there. If it warrants increase or something to that effect, we'll, we'll let you know, but I don't think we're going to be changing any of that. So that's all the changes here, and then, as you had mentioned, road length has always been a question, there's been some inconsistencies between, I think it was road length and width.
Yeah, road width, I think we've run into.
So I'll go back to.
I think as you're finding that one, what I'd like to suggest for the commission is that we spend the time between now and the next meeting, really reading this with our pens out, so that if there are any changes, we can discuss them at our next meeting, so that we can get a public hearing on the calendar for August or September at the latest.
I'm thinking that's when, you know, I mean, if we had to go to October, we could. I guess, for everyone's knowledge, I still, you know, I'd like to refer it to town staff as well as town attorney to review, and in terms of streets, street lengths and rights away, that kind of opens the door to some discussion, as it's been just over 10 years since we adopted the CDD regs, and looking at how well they worked or not worked, and what we've experienced since then, and in my opinion, we haven't had many large subdivisions that we could grab a large chunk of open space. The only one we had of any size was 23 lots, and that was off of Spring, Spring Valley, right, Spring Valley Lakes Road, no, Green.
And that is still being litigated, yeah.
Green Valley Lakes, sorry, it's Spring Rock Road. And that's still in litigation, although I think it's coming to an end. That said, it, that threw me off the litigation thing.
It's okay.
So anyway, there's some street, that was, they had 70 acres of open space, that was the point, so that, that, that was, we were getting some meaningful space under the CDD reg, it kind of worked, but the rest of the subdivisions have been smaller, four, five, I think the largest was an eight lot subdivision. So, you know, the open space, the amount of open space that we got from those was nominal in terms of the acreage, you know, tenths of acres, it doesn't really, it adds up, but it ends up being fragmented across town, rather than getting large swaths, which typically has more impact. Although, there's something to be said with, like the orchards, you know, the open spaces between the homes, even if they clear the trees, it's very valuable, just for privacy alone. So, you know, their, their home values are well over $500,000. So, streets in terms of the road lengths, here's our standard residential 700, I don't know anybody who's ever applied for a standard residential road. We have cluster open space, we never changed that to say CDD, and then, and again, max lots, it doesn't add up either, because when you apply other regulations, they get superseded essentially, and you can do, as you've seen, we saw 23 lot subdivision. So I think, go through some definitions here, I don't know if you want me to go through all of that.
No, I think that it's just worth another read by each of us, so that we can be prepared to discuss, one, the changes, and two, any issues like this, where we as a commission have, over the last few years, run into some areas here where we inadvertently create confusion for ourselves with, exactly like you're talking about there, I don't want to say contradiction, because that's not what it is, but there are some, some areas of the regulations where we have discovered our gray areas, and if we can do anything to clear that up, I think it would be helpful for this commission and those putting in subdivisions.
We have, nobody's, well, the only private road is up in, I think, off of Kensington currently, which is the big long driveway, essentially.
Right.
I don't know that we need to do much change here, nobody's really applied for a private road, except for that one subdivision that was recent, up in Upper Kensington. I think section five, where we talk about roads, is where we talk about the road length not exceeding 2,000 feet. I'll have to dig that out, I don't know the section off the top of my head. I think it might, is this section 610 here?
Mr. Gage, what should become of these pictures and the recommendations from Mrs. Calow?
Let's finish up, just close this item.
Those, those need to get submitted and put in, well, I don't know, those aren't even part of that record.
These are not subdivision discussion, regulation discussion?
They can get put in the record with the regulations, maybe, we could. In terms of that, what were they of again?
I believe she was asking for regulations.
It's on easements.
Easements, okay.
So.
So not subdivision.
I don't think we should mesh the two discussions at this moment, although I do see the.
That, that could bring up like, staff's response, you know, the fire marshal's comments, does he have anything to add?
Yeah.
In terms of fire easements and.
Let's do a little more research before we.
I mean, we could, we could certainly do that, I mean, I'll, I'll refer that, the document to him, I can say, hey, Bill, can you look at it specifically for easements, you know, but if you see anything else, you know, obviously comment. I'll just note that that's misspelled.
Okay, so we have a couple areas to draw our attention to specifically, but I think a thorough read is what's needed by everyone at this point.
Section, yeah, 610, I would read that section in the regs as far as the streets, because we talk about not just the construction, but access, having two points of access, serving no more than 20 lots if you're a private street. So, yeah, have a look, and then we can further discuss. If there's anything specific, any questions you have, I can ask the town engineer to comment as well.
Okay. Any questions on the changes presented in this document? I know we just got them, but anything that's burning tonight, yeah, like a note, read it. Okay, so if you're comfortable, Gary will move on here. Okay, we do not have any new business tonight, although we will get some research done on the public delegations issue brought to us today, and we can discuss that next time if there are items to discuss. So that brings us to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, we are adjourned.